Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling, Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, we're very glad you're here today.
We are so thrilled to have you. We also have our superheroes here, both of y'all. Hey, what's up Julie? We had Colin and Julie with us today. Excited to have you guys here.
Everyone.
So as you guys are coming in, let us know where in the world you are. We're always thrilled to be with you here. We're here every Thursday at noon Eastern time. Today, we're going to be talking about how you brand your blog and the content that goes on your blog. And we have some simple strategies for you to follow. We are going to begin with talking about sort of the setup. If we have the right sort of baseline stuff in place, then things can be very easy and quick for you on an ongoing basis. So we'll talk about both what that sort of static thing looks like, as well as what the thing you'll be working with on a weekly basis, or however often you create content. So come on into the chat, let us know that you're here. We're so excited to have you. We've got some folks who are just starting blogs here today, which is great timing. Do come on in and let us know, are you blogging yet? Are you trying to save time with your blogging? Are you just kind of thinking about whether you get started? Let us know. For those of you who don't know, this is a weekly live call that we make available to the entirety of Team Young Living. You don't have to be a Get Oiling user to benefit from what's taught on these calls. But of course, we hope that you'll come join us at Get Oiling. It's a dollar for your first month for our most popular plans. You can go to getoiling.com to learn more about why most of the brightest and biggest stars in Young Living are using Get Oiling. So let's go over to our slides here. We're going to pop out a video for the recording quality. We'll come back together and have a little Brady Bunch party when we're done. And yeah, we're going to get into what we came to talk about today. So I am seeing here that we, Kimberly says she's just starting to rebrand, started a while, blog a while ago. Put it on pause. It's a great opportunity to get yourself re-centered and refocused. Amanda says she is excited about this one, just starting a blog. Fantastic. Thanks for sharing you guys. Let's get into this. This doesn't have to be anything that's too terribly complicated or difficult. You do have a couple of different options here where we, hold on just a second here, let me make sure my, okay, my video is off. My camera just seems to look like it's still on over here what I'm seeing. So anyway. All right. So we're going to be getting into blogging content branding, making this simple and easy for you. There are ways that you can make this really kind of dialed up, or we can be very straightforward. We'll talk about both options here on the call today. So what we're going to get into is just the extent here of branding your blog and the content that goes on it, and the systems that you'll use and follow on a weekly basis, or as often as you release content to make this easy for you. And then of course, as always, we have space for live help and Q and A here. If you are looking for support, there is an opportunity here for you to talk through and walk through whatever it is that you're working on here on this call. So if you have questions, if you came here looking for help, whether it pertains to today's topic or not, here on the live call, please add it to the Q and A here on Zoom, so that we don't miss any of the questions that you may have. And if you are watching this as a replay in the future, you can get on the list so that you can join these live calls by going to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. And if you'd like to work together, if you'd like to schedule time in advance for us to work together on a call like this one, to work on anything that you want in your business strategy and how that works in setting yourself up online. And with Get Oiling, you can go to getoiling.com/web site review and pick a time that works for you, or rather a date in the future, because it's always Thursdays on one of our noon calls. And if you are in the process of getting things figured out, and maybe you don't feel like you are quite the same level of genius in your graphic design skills as you are in your sharing Young Living skills, we've got you covered. We've got an incredible team of folks who can help you get your projects done beautifully and pretty quickly. Getoiling.com/conceivers, you can learn more about our super talented team that can help you make your website and brand dreams come true. All right. So let's talk about branding your blog and your content. First, we're going to get into general website and blog branding setup. Like I mentioned at the top of the call, there are some kind of baseline things that you want to make sure that you've got in place, so that everything looks nice moving forward. It's kind of a set it or forget it thing. And with that, we'll actually get into what all of this entails here shortly. We'll also talk about how to make your blog, your website homepage. So for those of you who are content creators, if you love creating content, but you don't really love the idea of creating some fancy homepage for your website, your blog can be your homepage. And we can show you how to get that done today. We'll talk about how you brand the content that goes on your blog, so your blog posts. And of course, we'll talk about how we carry your branding into syndication, or how you share your content. Then we'll also talk, and this is a little bit, this is sort of in the lane of marketing. So if this language doesn't make sense to you, I can break it down otherwise. But we're going to talk about how we spin our branded assets into new tools for growth. And essentially, what this is going to look like today is taking graphics that you create based on a template and turning those into graphics that you use for other purposes. And I promise you, it's really quick and easy, and I could even show you how to get it done. All right. And I'm not a graphic designer, just to put that out there, not a graphic designer at all. All right. So let's get into general branding, website and blog setup. So this is your set it and forget it stuff. All right. So the first thing that we want to look at here is, is our logo that's up here at the top. And you can actually see, see where it says Jane Jones, and it's got this cute little sprout coming up out of the ground. And then of course, we can also see, if we look down here, where this lives on your site. So how you find this is you go to customize my site, and then you look over here to where it says logo image. You can opt for text if you don't want to use an image, but if you are going to use an image, we recommend 600 wide by 200 pixel tall image files with a transparent background. That's what's going to look best on your site if you have it set up like that. So definitely do either put text in there with your name or your business name, or add yourself a nice transparent background with this image resolution size. Now, if you want to have your story and photo show up on your blog posts or on your blog digest, it's a really easy thing you can do. You can go to my story and photo, and you can choose, just simply check or uncheck these boxes based on what you want, to show your story on your individual blog posts and events, and on your blog archive and event list pages. So I've selected both here, because whatever page they're on, I want them to learn more about Jane. And then of course, if they want to learn more about how they can work with her, she does have that call to action in the my story and photo section of her Get Oiling site. All right. So the next thing that we want to do, and again, this is really simple and straightforward, we want to title our blog. Now Jane Jones is the happy holistic mama, so she's got the happy holistic blog. You could simply be straightforward with this and say updates from your name, right? Or my name's blog, or however you would like to put it, you just make sure that it makes sense, right? Go with, what's, what's the best way to put this? Go with a clear is better than clever. In the majority of cases, you want people to understand what you're getting at. So if you get too into the weeds with how you title things, you can lose important opportunities to connect with people and to be found in search. Okay. So the way that we set this up, once we've decided what our title of our blog is going to be, we're going to go to our website menu and then look down to the next menu where you see Zoom Events and Blog. Click Blog Posts, and then you'll see this button here that says Blog Settings. There, where it says Blog Archive Header, that is where you can add in the name of your blog. Now you do see that there are some other options here, such as automatically showing posts from the Young Living feed. Don't want to get into that today, because what we're talking about is branding you, right? And not branding anybody else. So make sure that you've got a title here for your blog archive that is going to accurately reflect you and what you write on the blog. You can optionally choose to add a brand congruent graphic to your blog. So what you can see here is we do have the title Happy Holistic Blog, but we've created a lovely image here in Canva that has the title as well. And so this is going to show up at the top of the blog archive page. And it's going to look, of course, really nice if you're into this kind of vibe, right? So the way that we get this done is on that same blog settings page where we set the title of our blog, we're going to look down here to where it says Blog Page Header, and then we're going to add an image. Now, if you'd like to use the Canva button, you certainly could. You can look up the Blog Banner preset. You can actually just type in Blog and you'll see it in the list. That's going to give you this 2240 by 1260, nice big image, right? And, and of course, you do have the option as well. And in this particular case, well, I don't know that you would necessarily reuse this. If it's an image that you believe you would want to reuse, a design that you would like to reuse in the future, I would actually recommend that you create it in Canva separate from this Canva button. And then of course, you can come back and use this Canva button to grab an existing design and insert it into your Get Oiling. All right. So that's how you create the image and add that in. And then you can optionally, if you'd like, add a footer. And this is going to be on the Blog Digest page. So if you scroll all the way to the ba, to the bottom, underneath all of the blog posts or excerpts in this case, you'll see that there is a footer here, and this is one that is basically advertising or creating a call for action for someone to go and click this link here that takes them off to a landing page, where they can, in this particular case, get a guide and join a community. Okay, so this is, again, it's optional. You could do this. You don't have to do this. But the way that I did this was actually set this up. Again, this is on that Blog Settings. Scroll down to where it says Blog Page Footer. I created a table, so I have this sort of side by side look that you see right here. You can choose to do that or not. Obviously, it's completely up to you, and you also can keep this blank, if you want to keep it simple. Okay, Amanda, can you put that question that you just put into the chat into the Q and A? Because that's something that I can actually walk through and show you at the close of our call today. All right. The next thing that we want to do is add a footer for our individual posts. And so this is going to be really helpful for you if you always offer the same thing at the end of your content, right? A really simple thing that you could do is what I've shown you here, which is to have a button where we're sending someone to a landing page where they can opt in to get onto the, the blog list, right? So a newsletter list for blog updates. And then I've, top secret, I've literally gone into the, the footer page and copied this whole thing here. So you can actually take the social media stuff from your footer and just paste it in right here. And that's what I did. And so we can put all of this, follow me on social. So if you don't want to think to add this stuff to every single blog post, every time you post, and you want them to show up every time you release something, this is what you want to put together. And you can put that together here on this individual post footer. And again, this is still on that Blog Settings page. All right. Now, moving again further down that Blog Settings page, we can customize the sidebar. You can do this optionally. You don't have to. All of these things that I'm talking about here, you need the name for the blog. That's, that's absolutely necessary. The rest of this stuff, if you're just getting started, you can add on later or as you go. Okay. But here is the sidebar. This is a great place to maybe give a little bit of an excerpt of your story, maybe provide a link to a lead magnet that you offer, which is what we've done here, where we're sending someone to a habit guide. And so you can set this up in the extra sidebar content, if you want it to look nice and sort of centered like this. All you're going to do is center it here in this field. Okay. Now, if you would like to have your blog as your homepage, all you gotta do is go to Customize My Site. You'll see right here, I would like my homepage to be. And then there's a dropdown menu. If you have lots of pages, no biggie, just type in the word blog, and you'll see my blog show up as an option. Select that, save on this Customize My Site page, and that will now be the homepage of your website. So now that your blog is branded, we've just gone through the set it and forget it stuff. These are things that you don't need to worry about on an ongoing basis. Maybe you revisit them once or twice a year, right? But what we do here, moving forward from this point, is really our ongoing maintenance, right? It's how we set ourselves up with things that we'll be using every time we release new content. And, and please, if you're interested on this call in hearing more about how you might integrate additional types of content, like if you have a YouTube channel, or if you have a podcast, and you want to talk about how we can integrate that type of content into what we're talking about here, then definitely do put whatever that interest is in the Q and A, so that we can make sure we talk about this here on the call. Because these are options with your Get Oiling blog. All right. So let's talk about our content branding systems. What we're getting into is essentially how we make our content, wherever it is and whatever we're talking about, always look like everything else we do. The whole point of branding is to put yourself out there in a way that everything, your voice, your, your written word, images, things like that, all sort of have a stamp of you, right? And so that's going to essentially entail, and we do have other trainings on this. It's essentially going to entail having congruent, or similar, or same font, colors, styles, things like that. And if we set ourselves up smart from the start, then we have the ability to save ourselves a ton of time and make this really easy for us moving forward. So what we're going to do for our content branding systems is first to create a template that you can replicate in Canva for blog post images and featured images. Now, congrats you guys, you actually get access to one that you can use as a starting off point. It's, again, it's not designed by a graphic designer. It's very practical. It's one that I created. It is included in this week's resource bundle, along with a blog post that you can use, that's sort of pre-formatted for you to kind of get a feel for what a great blog post can be structured like when you're creating it. All right. So first, we want to have some kind of an image that we're starting off with, that we can use ongoing. Okay, that is going to need to be for our featured image 1200 by 630. So that's 1200 wide by 630 pixels tall. Now, the reason why we have it set up like this is that this is also an optimal resolution for sharing when you are maybe texting a link to somebody. It's going to show up really nicely. If you're putting something onto Facebook or Twitter, it's going to look nice there as well when that image populates. If you've ever gone to a social media, or even to your, your, your phone to text, and you've sent a link, typically an image populates, right? So this is going to be the image that shows up when you send out your link to your blog post, for instance, or posted on social. And so that's optimal resolution for that. And then what we will be doing here as well is inserting this, and I'll show you how to do it. When we have this image created, we're going to insert it into the body of our blog post as a featured image for the blog post, as well as in the top of our excerpt, so it looks really nice on our Blog Digest page. We'll also use this template to create our social sharing images if you choose to, and video thumbnails if you're creating video that is related to your blog post content. This would work as well for maybe an image that you use for a podcast, if that's something that you're doing. From there, we're going to have two saved replies that we can use every time we release content. Okay, so for a blog post, you can actually create a blog post using a saved reply. I love doing this, because you can get all of the formatting just like you like it. I think this is especially important if you're someone who is going to be sharing recipes on your blog. Utilizing saved replies is going to be a huge time saver for you, and it's going to get you the, the formatting that you want, the look that you want, and the structure of your content really easily. And then finally, for your newsletter, we do have other trainings on sending newsletters. And, and of course, with those trainings, there are resource bundles that you can utilize. But it does, it is important for me to note this here, because what, what you're sending looks like is important that it looks like what you're posting on your blog and what you're putting on your social, right? Your brand needs to really be an echo of how you're showing up, and it needs to really look and feel similar everywhere that you are. Okay, so this is a template. This is actually one that is included with the resource bundle that I've shared today. This is, if you can see here, 1200 by 630, and it's just a handful of examples of blog posts, featured images that you can use. It is by no means a recommendation on how you should brand yourself. Obviously, that is something that's unique to you, but you can see a couple of examples of how you can create something that's fairly congruent. And when you look through this template, if you grab it, you'll actually see that the title here with the kind of scrolly post stuff up here where it says Blog Post Title, the scrolly font, that's going to be the same throughout. And then of course, all of the other font that's used is similar there as well. So the idea with creating a template like this in Canva with that 1200 by 630 resolution, the idea here is for you to get creative about this stuff once, and then continue using this asset as a framework every single time you publish something, right? So it's just, it gives you a really easy place to start. When we sit down and we write, we aren't necessarily also filled with the inspiration to create some kind of an image that we would want to include with it, or how we would want to make it look. So if you've got some things that are already kind of made and ready for you to use, then of course, that gives you a great jumping off point every time you publish. So you're going to use that same template. If you are someone who enjoys blog posts that have lots of visual content, and you want to create that kind of content as well, you can actually replicate these to create images for maybe the different sections. If your blog post is about four different somethings, then you could actually create four additional images that are in the same kind of stylistic vein as the featured image, and you can be inserting those throughout your content, right? All right. So what we're going to do when we insert this featured image, so once we decide what it is, our main one, we are going to first put it up here in the post itself, right? This is technically optional for you. You don't have to do this. I like doing this, and I feel like this is pretty common throughout the blogging world, just to give you some nice, you know, branding and imagery when you, when someone first arrives on your blog post, okay? So obviously, you can pop this in right here. That's my first recommendation, is that you take that featured image and you stick it in right up at the very, very top. Okay, so that's in the post content itself. The next place that we want to put this featured image is right here, and that is the featured image, right? So you're going to click Choose File. You will need to have downloaded this to your device. This is not a Canva button situation, so make sure that you have it downloaded. And then the final step, which is slightly more complicated, but I really, really recommend this, especially if you're utilizing a Blog Digest for a homepage or not. If you're going to, if people are going to be going to your website.com/blog, you don't want to reveal the entirety of every post's content that they have to scroll through in order to see what the next post is. So what we're going to do is we're going to go down to Advanced Options and click it, so that it opens up and scroll down to this box here. We're going to uncheck, if it's already checked, Show the Featured Image on the Post. Because we don't want the image that you just uploaded to be inserted into the body of the post, right? So uncheck that, and then check Show Excerpt. And here, you could actually just scroll up to the top of your, of the page here, to the body of your blog post, copy by dragging your cursor, select and drag over this image, and maybe the first two or three sentences of the post, and paste it here, right? You could also, again, just upload the image here, and then add some kind of small excerpt, some kind of juicy bit that would get somebody to really want to click and open and read the rest of it, okay? So those are the three steps for using this featured image. Let me go back to the top. We're inserting it at the top of our blog post. We're adding it as the featured image. And then we are unchecking Show Featured Image on Post. We're checking Show Excerpt. We're putting it in here with a couple of sentences. And now, when you do this for all of your blog posts, people are going to see the title of the blog post, a big nice image that maybe echoes the title of the blog post, a couple of sentences that shows them that they should click and continue reading, and then there'll be some links that say Read More, so they can actually go and do that, okay? So that is how we brand the blog content, all right? So now, we want to talk about how we can repurpose, and this is spinning your assets, right? So spinning would mean you, you take a thing and you sort of spin it into something new, right? So what I'm talking about doing here is taking your featured image, and this is the template that I've given you guys here today. You can go into Canva and go to resize your design. And here, you can see that the size as it is, is 1200 by 630. But if you click with this little search bar here, you can type in the word Facebook Post. You can type in the word YouTube Thumbnail. You can type in Instagram Post, LinkedIn Post. All of these things are possible. So depending on where you plan to go and share, you could create visual content with this stuff as the base, but you will have to go and make some adjustments to your design, so that it looks awesome in that finished form. So definitely make sure that you're doing this. And again, especially important, if you're creating corresponding video for you to create a thumbnail, simply use YouTube Thumbnail, and then go in, if you have the video in YouTube, of course, you'll use that image as the thumbnail. If you have your video uploaded to the Get Oiling Video Manager, you can obviously swap out your video thumbnail there and customize it. If you're releasing podcasts, you can, I believe they need to be square. So you would, you would resize this to, to a square resolution, and of course, modify the design in kind. So if you are, like I just mentioned, using our video hosting, do please make sure that you do this. It's going to look awesome when you put it up on your site. And then of course, it's echoing back to posts on your blog. So if somebody happens to see this video, maybe somewhere else, they can, of course, make their way over to your blog to be able to see it, or if you want to share a link to the video, you can actually put, when you go to share the video in your email, you can put the link to where they go when they click to that blog post. All right. So now let's talk about how we can make publishing our content on an ongoing basis, super duper quick and easy with saved replies. So when you create a saved reply, in this particular case, we're creating one for blog posts. So we're going to give it a name like Blog Post Template. We're going to leave out subject line, because that's for emails, right? And then we're going to create the layout of what you want to have in your blog post in the body, right? So that would mean put that image up at the top. If there are, I think this is going to be of particular import to you. If you, again, are someone who releases recipes on an ongoing basis, if you link to particular things on an ongoing basis, you have the ability, just like you would when creating a saved reply for email, you have the ability to kind of have a template in place with the words, some of the words and links that you already want to use, or that you know you're going to use every week in your blog post template here that you can use as a saved reply, all right? So you may actually not need this, depending on how you go about creating your content. It could just be as simple as uploading your image, putting your copy in, and then of course, you know, maybe inserting a saved reply when you're composing the blog post for your recipe template. But this is something that if you want to follow the same format every week, maybe you want to have some maybe interesting formatting with images on the right side and text on the left, and vice versa, then you can actually construct something like that and follow the same visual format every single week, if you start off with a saved reply. Kimberly, it's a really good question, would a link as an Amazon affiliate work here? Yeah, if you have, well, there's a couple of ways you could do this. If you know that you would be inserting a link to your Amazon store, for instance, in every blog post, but not necessarily at the bottom, at the end, then yeah, absolutely. I would put that into a saved reply like this, or, and, and insert it in the place that you want it to show up. If it's something that you would simply mention at the end of every blog post, then that's something that might actually be just as good a fit to put in that Blog Settings page on the Blog Post Footer. So it's kind of up to you. You could do both. So when you are creating your blog, so we're actually, you can see here, this is body now, we are in the blog. We're in the blog creation here, or actually, this is, we're creating the blog and save replies, right? So we're still in the Saved Replies Editor. And what I want to encourage you to do here is to actually utilize this, the templates under Saved Replies that we've already created for you, these blank newsletter templates that you see. And if you come down here and you see the recipe, recipe templates, these can actually allow you to create a structure that you can plug your content into, both your visual and your written content ongoing. So this is just an indispensable feature of the Saved Replies function in the Get Oiling system, is that you do have this awesome ability to just drop in pre-formatted stuff, right? And so you can build your own template using these templates. Now finally, when we're in our blog post, so here we are now, we are in blog post, we're writing a new post. All you gotta do is click Saved Replies and go find that saved reply that you created. And now every single week, you're able to use the same format. Just go in and swap out your images, swap out your copy, and you have your blog post ready to go. All right. Now, if you are someone who tends to share your blog posts in an email newsletter, then you can actually create a branded saved reply for your newsletters as well. Now, I do recommend that you check out our additional training on newsletters, on creating beautiful emails with Get Oiling that work, that send, that deliver. You, you can obviously go that route. And of course, the example that I want to show you here is that you can drop it in here this week on the blog. This is actually a reuse of the recipe template that we have in Saved Replies, where I have made a square version of our blog content. And of course, we're talking about the title, what's on the blog, and we've got a link to go to the blog post. So this is something that you would modify on a weekly basis in the email newsletter that you send out to promote your blog post that you've released that week. So in this case, you're just simply going to pop in that featured image, but first, use that resize, spin it. use that resize, spin it for new purposes, resize it as a square image. And of course, put that into this template here and tell them why they should click and send them from your newsletter over to your blog post. Now this is one from Julie. Uh, I want to share with you a hack uh, to get your content out there in three different ways. Lightning fast, three clicks. Step one is to of course, create your blog post because we are here to create and share content, right? So you create your content. And when you're creating your content, this is step two. Uh, we're going to select to send our post out to our contacts when it's published. My personal recommendation is to send an excerpt. Okay, so uh, that means that we're going to get them to read the first few sentences and have them be compelled to click. This is going to increase your deliverability. If you just send the entirety of the blog post, people might read it. Maybe they do nothing with it. It's better for you long term if people are clicking links in your email and, and going to your website and spending time there. So of course, choose to send this via email, text message, app notification, and a combination of these three. Uh, select excerpt. And of course, the first click in these three clicks is to publish your post. Now you've sent it out to your list. And of course, the uh, second click uh, here or third, three clicks. Uh, our set, third step is to click and share. Uh, so you can go right here, look for your post. The third link over here on the bottom from the left is share. We click that, that's click number two. Then click number three is select Facebook or Twitter. And that's gonna open up Facebook or Twitter with your link populated. Write whatever you want to and send it off. So when you've done that, you've now published your blog and broadcasted it to your list and posted about it on social. So you've shared it three ways, right? It's there for the search engines. It's there to your list. And now of course, it is out there in the world on social media to be discovered. Alright, so let's get into some discussions, some live help, Q and A, and of course, any of the questions that you guys may have. Whether it's about this or anything else, so let's uh, let's go take a look. Okay, so Amanda, you had a question about how to get that um, that menu look on Jane's um, on Jane's menu. So let's go take a look at that real quick. So uh, that's Chrome. That's not what I want. Give me just a second and let me get over to here and get a correct share for you. Okay, perfect. So I'm in Jane's site here and so you're gonna do this under menu. And just so everyone knows what we're talking about, what Amanda's talking about is how did we get this button right here? So under website menu, I've got obviously these, these are the different links that you see. And then book a call. When I click this to open it, the header style is, I've actually chosen a button. Right? So you could have text here, but what I've done is selected a button. So that's all you gotta do. Um, this is a um, it's a menu header and that's why it, it doesn't have a dropdown menu, right? So it's menu header, the text is book a call. Um, I am linking it right here and then of course, I've chosen a button for how it displays. Okay, what else, what else? Alright, do you have tips for deciding on colors and fonts for branding? That is a good question. I feel like we've, we've done a couple of, of videos on this previously. But um, what I really recommend doing is, is just leaning on some of the really great stuff that's already out there. Um, let me show you something real quick. That's, um, I actually did this with a client the other day. We're trying to establish some uh, branding for a course uh, that she's working on. And so um, what I did here was I just created a new design and this, I'm just gonna do logo, which is just gonna give you a square uh, square resolution. And when you go to text, you can actually scroll through these and see stuff that you like that's in Canva. So this is what I typically, typically recommend. If something catches your eye, like maybe you really like this one. Let me go ahead and make that a color that's not going to like burn my eyeballs. There we go. So uh, we'll put that here. And then now I know that I want some kind of a font that kind of chills this out a little bit, right? And so maybe now I want to keep scrolling. And here we go. Here's some simple stuff. Maybe I like, I like this. Hmm. Here we go. This here's to you. I like this one. So let me click it. It's called Didact Gothic. Cool. So I'm gonna ungroup these guys so I can delete what I don't want. And so now I have a pairing of fonts that I really like. Really quickly, I don't want to get too into the weeds here. Highly recommend that you have some kind of a fun font that you use as just like a punctuation. Think about it like um, jewelry, like if you're accessorizing an outfit, this is kind of an accessory. You do want to have the primary font on your website be something that is a bit universal and highly recognizable by email systems and just the, the web generally. A really great rule of thumb for that purpose is uh, is, is Google fonts. So that's fonts.google.com. These are free. You can add them to your Good Oiling really easily. Uh, and so I would go for a serif or a sans serif font. And uh, of course, you know, pick your language and you can find the things that you like. And so that would be the, the main one that I would use on your site, but for anything that's like cute, florishy, uh, of course you can um, you know, utilize Canva for that purpose. There's also coolers.co. When you go here, you can actually um, look at trending brand palettes or trending palettes, color palettes, generally speaking. Uh, and so you can actually get some inspiration there where that's concerned. Okay, and it's taking absolutely forever to load. Safari is just not my friend this week. Okay, so um, yeah, let's talk about this real quick. Amanda said, uh, we're interested in learning how to integrate YouTube. So if you are creating, and I highly recommend this, because I mean, why not show up on both uh, you know, on, on YouTube where you can get lots of traffic a lot more quickly than say a blog post will rank uh, in SEO. Uh, then why not do it, right? So what I would do is um, make sure that when you're creating your YouTube and your blog content, that they're referential to each other, but not necessarily identical information. Because you want to be able to tell them to go from one to the other and make sure that you're including in your copy of the video to watch the video, right? And be sure that you're including verbally in your video to check out the link to the post, right? And so now you're going to kind of have that um, flow of traffic both ways because you're doing it that way, but where the branding is concerned. Um, I would, again, I'd encourage you to consider using a version of your thumbnail. Um, or a version of um, either for both, right? So if, if you created a YouTube thumbnail that you particularly love, then make your uh, blog post featured image really similar to it, right? Use some of the same style elements, design them, you know, like make a copy of one, design it and then um, resize that whole file. Um, but basically what you want to end up with is if you're using YouTube, uh, is you want to have a YouTube um, thumbnail version. You want to have a twelve hundred by six thirty. That's a blog featured image version at minimum, right? And so then you're going to of course, attach the thumbnail. And then you would post the actual video from YouTube on the blog post in the comments, uh, and, and sorry, in the blog post itself. And then in the description for the blog post you are in, for the YouTube video. Let me start over. You've got your blog post here, YouTube video here, right? Put the YouTube link on the blog post, right? And then the description for the YouTube video, put the link to the blog post. So they're linking to each other. Okay. What would we use the saved reply for? Do you mean use it as a blog post update or notification of the new blog? So um, the saved reply, you can actually construct a blog post from a saved reply. So um, let me see. Uh, yeah, let's, let's go over here and take a look. Stacy, it's a really good question. Uh, so let's go over. Oh, and here's coolers, by the way, if you want to actually, it's coolers.co, C-O-O-L-O-R-S.co. And you can explore trending palettes, going back to that branding question. You can actually just scroll through and look at a lot of cool stuff there. Okay, so let's go take a look at um, at building a blog post template for yourself out of a saved reply. So we're gonna go to settings under website. Saved replies. We're gonna go to create. And then here in the body, we're going to click saved replies, because you can use saved replies in saved replies. Now scroll down here to the templates here and maybe this blank newsletter template one is where I want to start. And this is how I would want my blog post to show up. I would delete this and actually replace it with that big image. Uh, that featured image would go here, right? Um, I would delete the button, of course, so let's unlink it and delete that. And then maybe I want to add a little something more here. So I'm gonna go back under saved replies and I'm going to add in newsletter template two. And so maybe now I've got another image here, but now I've got one over here on the side. And of course, here again, because it's not being used as a newsletter, but a blog post, I'm gonna delete that button. So you know, here we go. So headline one of the blog, headline two of the blog. Removing buttons, right? So maybe I want to include a recipe at the end of the blog post. I can again, here go to saved replies. I'm gonna go to recipe template one. And there's my recipe. Uh, I'm going to call this blog post template. And I'm going to save it. And then of course, I can go over to blog posts and create a new post. And here I'll go to saved replies and grab that blog post template. And so now I can go here and I can replace this with my featured image. I can replace this maybe with another image that I've created. Maybe it's that one. Obviously these don't go together. Right? So you can just swap these out. And so if you are utilizing this template, then you may know that you need to create a um, an image that is taller than it is wide and maybe two of them so that you can include them. Um, in, if you're gonna be using the same format every week, right? But that's the idea is you have it pre-formatted. So all you have to do is click and swap, right? So I can just swap my text here, uh, I can swap my image here, et cetera, right? And then your recipe is already, you know, formatted here and you can put whatever you want. And then of course, once you publish, it's, it's in there and it's ready to go. So that's what it looks like to create this for a blog. Of course, you can create something similar for a saved reply. And you can uh, mention your new blog post and put it out there if that's how you choose to send. You can also, like I mentioned at the end, um, go on down here to actually publish. So maybe I want to email this. And um, the question here, I believe Cornelia has uh, you can actually select the tags that it goes to. So you can go to newsletter here and just send this out to the people or blog updates or whatever your tag is. You can filter for just those people and send this out to them. And that's, of course, this makes it very quick and easy for you. Don't have to worry about like how, trying to figure out and rebuild a format for you to use on an ongoing basis. Good questions. Okay, um, is a saved reply customizable to save with your branded font? Yes, absolutely. Do make sure that um, under colors and fonts are that you have your fonts selected that reflect your branding before you start creating the saved reply. If for whatever reason, what you choose to do on your blog is slightly different than what you do on the rest of your site. A good example of this might be that you choose to have us, just that you prefer a seventeen point font instead of an eighteen or a sixteen or whatever. Um, if you have that kind of preference for how this shows up, then you can create that in your saved reply and then everything is preset for you every single week. Whether that be the actual font face or the size or weight of the font that you want uh, when you publish. It's a good question. Alright, Amanda, if you have time, I would like to check out the blog, see if there's anything I could do to enhance or edit. Yeah, we got time for that. Let's bring you up. Let me find you here. Perfect. Hi.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. How's it going?
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, do you have
Help me hear my toddlers. Yeah.
Awesome.
Sitting on my lap.
Awesome. Alright, so we're gonna go look at your blog.
I just started it like two weeks ago or so, so.
Love it. Ooh, this is great. Okay.
No, that's not that one.
Ooh, I like what you did there. Is this in the blog post itself?
Mommy. I don't see what you're looking at.
Oh, what? Of course you don't because I am not sharing. Thank you. There you go. Alright, this is awesome. Alright, so this, you, you put this in the top of your post. That's really smart.
Yeah, and I, and then I put it in the top of the like excerpt section just so that it was nice and easy for people to subscribe.
That's fantastic. So that's just so folks know, it actually is, it's taking them over to a landing page to join the blog list, which is just a really smart move. So if we head over here, excellent. This looks great. Um, so we've got a, an image up here, title image. This looks really good. This is a little, like this is a tiny bit risky. Um, get like putting this in, like this much into script font. Um,
Okay.
Just, it just a tiny bit. Um, and it's, and it's just because
I gotta figure out how to mute myself.
You're good. People will, it feels like unmute as often as you need to. Like I think a, a, all of us here, at least on this panel, have kids. So um, and yeah, Colin certainly, certainly still has several toddlers. Um, anyway, so basically this here, um, you, you can get, it's, it's a little risky just because uh, we are lazy brained in this day and age and reading something that is that different from the straight up and down font. Uh, it, it's just, it's, it's a minor thing. It may be nothing, but um, I would recommend if you're wanting to really emphasize something uh, that you consider using a font uh, or a header like kind of weight like this one. Cause it's, it's gonna jump out in the way that you really want it to. Um, that said, these look awesome. Like I love that you're, you're using emojis. That's visual interest. Really well spaced. The formatting looks awesome. I like how you've put the colors in here like this. It really, there's a lot of information, but it's broken up really nicely. So it flows and, and it's not, you don't look at it and go, oh my God, that's a lot. I need to come back to this later and never do. Like it's, it's easy to read this, which is really good. Good use of an image here. Okay, now this is fantastic. Okay, still good. Fabulous. Okay, so um, let me see. What's your, what do you want them to do from here, Amanda? Do, do you have a call to action? Do you want them to like book a call with you or, or like fill out a form to get a special, you know, recommendation or like where, where do you want this to go?
Yeah, so I actually don't really have one on this one. Like on the spring cleaning one, I had um, like an opt, a freebie and a challenge opt-in, but I guess I looking at that uh, candle one, I guess I didn't really put a call to action in that one, did I?
Okay, I mean, it could be as simple as like a, did you know? I, I give away pu- pu- plus a customized personalized uh, offers. Like I, if you want to know what your best oil might be, fill out this form or just
Oh yeah, I love that.
Or hit contact. Like you keep it really simple and just say hit contact and tell me that you're looking for a personalized recommendation. And um, and, and that's like, that's a super simple, quick and dirty way to get that done. So okay, though this, the, the post looks fantastic. Um, and let's look at the, the digest page. I love the look of this. It's really clean. It's really easy to see and how is this blue? Do you know what?
Yeah, I actually didn't know how to change that. I don't know why it's showing up like that. Sometimes I get um, annoyed with the, like sometimes I can't edit buttons like I would like to.
Yeah.
I don't know why mine's blue.
Huh. I, well, I, I'm curious because I've never seen that change. Like this gray is all I really know. Um,
Also, one other thing
Curious. Uh huh.
Is um, I think I had asked before and I think as of right now, there's not really anything I could do um, separate with it, but as far as the um, font and stuff that's used in the, like underneath the blog where it says like comments and stuff. It's like my header font, but then it's like bolded and italicized or something. And I feel like it's so hard to read and it's the same way on my um, it's the same way on my like events page, but I don't know, I don't think there's anywhere where I can personally edit that stuff. No, so not, what, if you like go back to um, where all the blogs are, like the blog archive, I think it's called, right there, like underneath, right there. Yeah, like I don't, I wish that would be easier to read.
Okay, well, okay, so two things. Number one, this is where that blue color I think might be coming from.
Okay, so maybe I have to change that to like be a different one. That's not gonna show up on something.
And then maybe, and maybe like And then maybe and maybe like change this one to another one of the buttons. Yeah.
Okay.
So swap those out, because yeah, these these do, some of these do actually have like a default placement in the system. So if you ever see that color uh somewhere and you wanna change it, and it's in a place like, say, the buttons on your vault, for instance, where it doesn't show up uh as as changeable there in the vault, this is where you can go and find that. And so I I think that that's what's happening here.
Okay, probably.
Because it's the only blue that I see in anything that you have. So um let's look at, so, okay, so headline font, normal. Um body text font, normal, and it's not italicized. Huh. Well, I'm I'm stumped on that. Um.
I think that's just the way the setting is like in the on the backend or something, because it's the same way for my events. And I just have started putting like that information in the oh, see, but yours doesn't look as bad. I don't know. Mine just like looks really unreadable for some
I think it's because, so I it it might be because of the the caps. Um, so let's see, that's uppercase. There's not a they're they're not set to be uppercase. I wonder why would it would actually know that that's not all uppercase. Hmm. Well, these are both your header font. Right? So these these are whatever you have selected for your header is what shows up in these places. Greg, please talk over me and correct me or like tell me anything else that needs to be included here.
Kind of looking here on the backend. It it looks like for some reason the blog is is forcing that the header to be italic. Uh uh the I for no particular reason, I guess. Um.
Mm hmm.
But yeah, that's kind of what it it looks like. It's, yeah, might be
Yeah.
overriding that piece. It's not all caps, so I don't know that that's changeable. It is that Anton font, whatever that is.
Mm hmm.
Um, so it is using that. It's just for some reason, it's uh attaching italic on there. I'd have to look into that and why that's happening.
Yeah, it's happening on events as well, it looks like. Interesting. Okay, yeah, so that's something that we can look into on the backend. Because that's that's a little wacky and definitely a little like hard to read.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
If if you wouldn't mind, I could jump in. Um, and if you wanna shoot me an email, I might be able to um maybe able to do something with that. So just kind of send me an email at at our support box just to remind me and then
Okay, yeah, I can do that. I email you guys all the time. So
Totally, yeah.
Thank you so much. You guys are so wonderful.
Oh, we appreciate you. Thanks for coming out. Okay, there's a couple more questions here. Jen says, right now I add a new picture for each blog post. Instead, should I be using featured image in its place? So um so yeah, if you're using a featured image that you can repeat its use uh throughout and in those three steps, like I shared with you in the excerpt in the body and as the actual selected featured image. Um but do just make sure that when you're doing this, um that you are using the same size, the resolution every single time. So that twelve hundred by six thirty. And if they're always the same size, it's gonna look really nice in the excerpts. Uh and of course, it'll look nice when you share it. And if you're using the same fonts and color schemes and general kind of design principles uh in each of those images, then you're going to have a really flow, like well-flowing, congruent blog uh altogether. So yeah, um take that that picture and maybe plug it into a template like the one that I shared with you guys today in that resource bundle and um and then you're off to the races there. Okay, Cornelia says, use a grow workspace class as an example. I understand the slightly different content on YouTube and a blog to cross promote. Would you still offer a landing page with the class sway or email class? So um hmm. I think it depends, right? Like, I I was really just using that because those are blog posts that were already pre-populated. So generally speaking, um uh when when you're thinking about offering something, you have a couple of defaults, right? So if you're on YouTube, the defaults are uh like this video and subscribe to our channel. If you're watching this on YouTube, please do those things. Um, so like the video, subscribe to the channel. That's a default, right? If you're making YouTube videos. Um, click the link in the description. Also, a default for YouTube videos, but what you put there is really going to depend on the nature of the content, what you're promising in your content and what um you ultimately wanna get out of it, right? So if we're trying to send them to, let's just say, for instance, you are utilizing grow workspace content and spinning that into uh a sort of framework for a blog post, you could say, by the way, I offer an in-depth resource on this, and I've linked it in my blog. You can click below to find it. Right? And then you send them to the blog post. They have to read the blog post, then they find the resource. And you send them because they opt in. After opt-in, maybe you send them this way. Or you send them the email campaign. So that's how I would do that, right? You've got the video that kind of mentions that you have a thing, but you gotta click the link in the description. Send them to the blog post, and then in the blog post somewhere, you've got the link to a landing page where they have to opt in in order to get that thing. Okay, um, do I have the ability to set fonts? And where do I do that? Yes, um y- you as a um platinum with Get Oiling, you can actually do that. You can go over here to colors and fonts. And you can set any fonts that are in the system. But if you wanna add more fonts, you can go to the customize my site page. Scroll down here to setup fonts. And this is where you can uh pick the Google font that you wanna use as your primary font in your system. Or, you know, go Google for all of them, and they're all here, and you can add them. Or a little bit more advanced, if you have purchased or have rights to a custom font that you want to upload and use, then uh there is an article on custom fonts you can search for right here. And you can actually go in and and create uh whatever the look is that you want, and there are detailed instructions here. Questions? Okay, I saw some gross sways in Jane's blog. Is there a simple way to make the sways? Uh to put the sways to a blog post? Feel like there may have been a training on that. Um so generally speaking, I I don't remember if I put a sway into one of her blog posts. Definitely not an example that I am providing as a recommendation for you today, branding yourself. But that said, um what you can one hundred percent do, and this is something that I've seen work. I believe it still works just fine. If you go to your blog post. Um. What header should be the curse? So I would actually I don't generally recommend using a cursive font for a header, because um it's it it's just, it's not as easily read. You can add it as a font in your system. So from your dropdown menu, you can maybe use it as a sweet little punctuation or sign off something with your name or something like that. Uh but for a header, I I would use something that is um really easily legible. Um, okay, so what I would do here is uh I'm in demand. I'm in Amanda's, and I'm not going to edit Amanda's here. Let me hop out of my share real quick here. Um, in your blog posts or really anywhere that you want to embed a sway that is not an email, um you can I believe this might still work. Does anybody have a sway link handy? You just like paste a sway link for me that I can grab and use as as an example here. Um. Let me pop into Jane's blog and we can talk about this real quick. I believe what I did previously that I recall working just fine uh was going over here as though you're going to embed a video. So just click enter a couple times. Go over here like you're gonna add video and go to embed code. Thank you, Colin, for this way link. Here, let me go over here and grab this. So copy. Perfect. So um I'm so you're gonna go to your sway. And under share, we're gonna get embed code. We're gonna copy it to clipboard. And then I'm gonna paste the code here and use embed code. And in the past, that has worked just fine. And there you go. Treat it like a video. Just make sure you're grabbing the embed code for your sway. And then um pop it in like you are popping in video code, and you can embed that right there inside of your post. Simple. So as a general rule of thumb, and I'm so excited for you, Allison, uh in getting started uh with uh platinum level membership with us. Uh there's so much that you've unlocked in doing that. And one of those things is to be able to have really tight control over your branding and how you show up. Um, generally speaking, uh and you'll see this in the other branding training that you have access to, whether it be in the good oiling member area in private programs or in the um in our YouTube channel uh is is that there are basically, you you wanna choose three fonts. Basically, uh one of them needs to be a really nice bold font that can work well for your headers, something that looks good. Maybe when it's all caps or in bold, it's clear and easy to read. Uh and it it really catches the eye, because that's what headlines are supposed to do is catch the eye, right? And then you need a really clear, easy easily legible body font. Ideally, this needs to be a Google font. Uh because that's going to increase the deliverability of your emails, because you don't have some kind of font that they don't know and have never seen before. That code doesn't compute to them, and maybe there's something fishy about your email, and therefore you don't go straight into the inbox. So um we don't want that happening. So uh Google font is a really safe bet. Uh so using something that you like, that's um again, easily legible, clean-looking, easy to read um is gonna be your body font. And then whatever your cursive is, you're just gonna use that every now and then. Obviously, if you're creating images that have um text in them, that's a great place to put them. Uh if you want to sign your name off as sort of in in your signature in your email, uh even that's better done with an image and then just using your alternate text. Uh but even on like on a webpage, if you write a sales letter or something like that, you sign it off. That's gonna be a great reason to use that. Uh but as the um the sort of default setting on your on your website for this, this is the typeface for all of my headers on your website, I would I I would actually not encourage you to use um a cursive font for that. Okay, I was not seeing it look like a sway, but just the info is in the blog post. Is it just copy and paste? So I did a training a long time ago on our YouTube channel where that blog post was created that you saw today, Allison. Uh and what I was basically showing was ways to repurpose your content. And so if you look up repurpose, maybe just search the word repurpose on our YouTube channel. Uh you'll be able to to find that, and it's definitely something that was covered in Grow Workspace's Office Hours recordings, if you have access to those. Um but I basically took information from the presentations and stuff like that and spun that into a blog post. So it just shows railway for header and Montserrat for text. Does that work? Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Um for a cursive text, I mean, Euphoria, if you just select that, that's a Google script font. Um you can select that under the Google fonts. Just make sure that box is checked. And it's always going to be in the dropdown menu for you. It's just not going to be a preset for the header font and the body font on your website. Is there a newer training for all of the updates? That's a start here type training. It's a good question, Kimberly. I think generally speaking, our start here trainings for get oiling users are gonna generally be about the same, because the things that we have updated of late, like some of the 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 more the bigger, more significant updates uh that we've made uh to things like hosting video and having a store and things like that. Those tend to be for most users a little bit more advanced, so it's not necessarily a jumping off point for most folks. So I would definitely make sure that you've gone through the the getting started uh trainings that you've had access to. And then, of course, as you have things that you want to kind of branch off and focus on, uh then we definitely do have deep dives for those. And if you have any specific requests, if there's anything for you that you're not seeing, please let us know, uh because it's feedback from folks like you uh that help us to create the content like this um that we have this week and every week on Thursdays. Awesome. Thank you, guys, for being here this week and spending this time with us. I'm so excited to see you put yourself out there with great content. And uh we'll be back here same time next week. Have a great weekend, everybody.